To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And the IMC is roll call?
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Crone?
Here.
Councilmember Grove?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Here.
Then the item D is open forum. Open forum is for anyone here tonight to address the council on any subject over which the council has the authority to act, or any item on the agenda other than a public hearing. If anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council with their comments or questions at this time. If so, please approach the podium or raise your hand. If you're participating via Zoom, please click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions. You need to state your name and address for the record. Where are you going to start?
Thank you. It's my first time here, so I appreciate the help. My name's Shane Ort. I live at 1545 South Warrior Lane. And I just wanted to bring to the city council's attention, if everybody didn't know, but I do not believe there's anywhere within the city of Waukees for the citizens to turn in their used beverage containers to get their redemption value back. We do have a solution if anybody wanted to talk about it later, but I just wanted to bring it up. And I think it's an issue that we should look at. And I did want to shout out that I noticed that there is a cardboard redemption or cardboard drop off, which I think is great to help the recycling as well. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Anyone else?
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
Well, with that, it's item E, the agenda approval. Can I get a motion to approve?
Vote to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Madam F. Watten, Denman and Company on the upcoming fiscal year 2025 audit.
Good evening. My name is Robert Enders. I'm a partner with Denman CPAs here. Denman's been engaged to perform the fiscal year 2025 audit. We'll be onsite next week with staff going through that audit engagement. This is our opportunity to talk a little bit with you as members of governance about that audit process. Make sure we can answer any questions you may have regarding the work we're about to get ourselves into. Just a quick reminder here as to what our responsibilities as your auditor is. Our responsibility to express an opinion, opinion on whether or not management's financial statements are accurate. We're also responsible for expressing opinions on some of the supplemental information that goes into the audit report. And finally, we will issue a report on internal controls. We're not auditing internal controls, but if we do identify deficiencies or areas of concern that warrant governance's attention, we will report those to you in an internal control document. Bear in mind that the responsibilities of management are the accuracy of those financial statements themselves as well. They don't get to pawn that off. And the auditor management's responsible for those accurate financial statements. Management's also responsible for ensuring the accuracy and effectiveness of its internal control processes. And just because we're going through an audit process doesn't mean those responsibilities are alleviated. They still rely with management, our responsibility as your auditors to express an opinion on the accuracy of those financial statements. When it comes to getting that to a point where we can express an audit opinion, we have to think about what risks there are to the financial statements. Those include things like non-routine transactions. There's several of those. Each year, the city gets itself into the CIWW relationship this past fiscal year. Something we'll be looking at carefully. The gas utility course will have some unique characteristics in this year as well. Other things that we'll be looking at. I can sneak a little closer to the microphone if that would be helpful. I apologize. Other things we're going to be thinking about are judgmental matters. What estimates and judgments are management making within its financial statements? Pension liabilities is a good example of judgments that management has to make for those financial statements. New accounting standards is one this year that management's working its way through called GASB 101 related to compensated absences and a host of other items as well. We do assess those major risks and we do report those to you as governance. We do have two major risks that we are specifically thinking about going through our audit, and that is management override of controls and revenue recognition. Both of those are standard risks. They're not unique to the city. All audits that our profession performs must consider the possibility that management's going to circumvent controls, and we're going to do audit procedures to help us mitigate those risks. So that is not unique to the city in any respect. And then finally, revenue recognition, also our professional standards suggest that that is always a risk for an organization of your structure and status. And we're going to do audit procedures specifically around that to mitigate those risks. As I said already, we will report some observations we have within the control structure environment of the city, but we're not audit internal controls. Bear that in mind as you look at those recommendations. It's possible that an audit can be performed and not identify control deficiencies that do exist. Materiality is a really important concept here that we got to talk about real briefly here. Materiality. We're not testing every single transaction that the city goes into during the course of the year. If we were, you'd never get rid of us. We'd just live permanently in your conference room. So we have to take into consideration materiality, and we're going to test based on our understanding of concepts such as materiality and significance. For us to do that, we do look at some numerical data points, total receipts, total assets, and then some qualitative factors as well. What we perceive to be risk, and a couple other qualitative factors, including how much oversight there is from council. We take into consideration that we are talking about taxpayer dollars, and that does earn a level of scrutiny. Otherwise, that would not be there. And a host of other matters here that you can see in front of us here as well. As I mentioned, we'll be onsite just next week for the majority of a two-week period. So feel free to, if something comes up that you didn't think of tonight, you know how to get ahold of us. We're going to be right here at City Hall, working with staff, with the intention of being back late in the fall, maybe December, to present our final audit report to you. Now, this is the most important part of tonight's presentation. I get to be quiet, and I get to ask you guys if you have any comments, questions for us. As part of this audit process, it's really important for us to make sure we understand the risks, observations, concerns that council have so that we can adapt them into our audit plan and our strategy. So if there are questions or concerns you have for us, I'd be happy to hear them now. And again, if something comes up outside tonight that you'd like to reach out to us, you know how to get ahold of us, too. Welcome back. I feel like we've missed you. We're happy to be back. Yes, thank you.
Item G1 is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance, City of Waukees, Iowa, by rezoning certain properties from KRC to KMU/PD1, a parcel known as Kettlestone Central South, Lot 2, Lot 5. And now to close this public hearing open. Becky, have we received more correspondence?
None has been received in the city clerk's office.
Andy?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Clark and council members. Before you tonight is a consideration of a rezoning request submitted by the owner and applicant Caliber Land Company, LLC. The property proposed to be rezoned is located south of Southeast West Town Parkway and west of Southeast Glacier Trail, and it's approximately 2.96 acres in area. It's identified in blue on the screen. It's located adjacent to the rest of the Kettlestone Central Development that has been developing over the last several months. Excuse me. Notices were mailed on August 1st to surrounding property owners within 250 feet. No correspondence has been received either for or against this request. I'll zoom in here a little bit. So again, it's the area outlined in blue. There's a small pink building in the upper right-hand corner of the site. Don't pay attention to that. That's just kind of a future kind of placeholder building. We're mainly focused on this L-shaped building on the west side of the site. The concept plan identifies the construction of a five-story building. The first floor of the building would house an office space for a financial institution. And then the remainder of the building, remainder stories of the building would include multifamily dwelling units, a total of 92 dwelling units within the building. The plan development overlay is requested to allow the project to have a slightly higher density than what would normally be allowed in the KMU zoning district of 30 units per acre. This is proposed to have 32 units per acre. When you break that down, there are 92 total units proposed within the building, which would bring that to like 31 and a half units per acre. So that's why the request is for 32 is simply so that we're not having it so specific in the PD. So with 32 units per acre, they could have up to like 94 units, but they're only proposed to have 92. In addition, the plan development overlay includes a provision in the KMU zoning district. Again, the main purpose of a mixed-use district is to have a building, you know, close to the property line, close to the right-of-way line. So in kind of not typical of what the rest of our zoning districts have, this has a maximum setback of 20 feet rather than a minimum setback. There's an existing public utility easement and sanitary sewer easement that encumbers quite a bit of this north property line where that building couldn't even meet that maximum 20-foot setback. So because of utilities and sewer that's already been installed, it's already encumbering the property with this proposed building, they can't meet that maximum 20-foot setback. So there's, those are the two main provisions included within the plan development. There are some proposed elevations. Again, a five-story building. There is a drive-through for the financial institution that's shown on the south side of the building. Here's kind of some renderings that give a little bit better look of what the building is. The Kettlestone Master Plan land use map identifies this property for office use. This was rezoned to retail back in 2024. However, with this proposed rezoning, you'd still have the ability to have an office user, but also include some multifamily units in a large developing commercial development along this corridor. Kettlestone Master Plan's intent is also to provide flexibility in land use decisions, provided the land use meets the overall intent of the master plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this request for Kettlestone Central South, Plat 2, Lot 5 at their meeting on August 12th. I'm happy to take any questions, and staff recommends holding the public hearing.
Thank you. Does anyone, is the applicant here tonight? Would they like to speak?
I don't see any. Oh, there's, yes. Nikki, would, do you have anything, Dan?
Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or raise your hand. If you're participating via Zoom, click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions. But it has to be on this public hearing.
As I've asked before, I'm Veronica Lass, and I'm a soil and water conservation commissioner. On these projects, we're developing different developments on former farmland. And so it has certain soil types. Is it a designated national wetland area? Is it a karst limestone area? We need to know those things in relation to switching, and we also need the tile maps that were used for that farm prior to. It's because the drainage will be affected. So is that addressed in your development? You're switching farmland to?
Well, to be clear, this land has actually been zoned for retail for several years and has not been used for farming. So I appreciate your comments. We can definitely get a response back to you from staff.
But there's going to be a build on any sense of it's karst limestone area.
And I'm not sure, because all of that work is typically part of the actual building construction. Yes? Please do.
So this particular property was included as part of the overall preliminary plat for Kettlestone Central South, Plat 2. So during that process of approval of the preliminary plat, the design engineers for the subdivision do a stormwater management plan, and this map, this map doesn't show it. But in this large outlot further to the south, there is a regional stormwater detention basin. So in the stormwater design for the overall plat, things like intercepting tile lines and soil conditions and whether something is a national wetland or something like that, those are things that are looked at when we did the preliminary plat. And then to my knowledge, none of this is a designated wetland. And any sort of tile line would have been intercepted and rerouted to the storm sewer at the time of development of the individual lots.
Are there any other comments or anyone online?
No hands raised in Zoom.
Counsel, any questions? And now declare this public hearing closed. Not sure why you did either. Agenda item G2 is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance, City of Waukees, Iowa, by rezoning certain property from KRR to KMF stacked high, a parcel seen on Kettlestone Lakes. And now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any questions?
No, none received in the city clerk's office.
Andy?
All right. Well, good evening again. The owner and applicant, or excuse me, the owner in this request is Kettlestone Lakes LLC, and the applicant is Trident Development. The property is generally located west of Grand Prairie Parkway and south of Southeast Ashworth Road. It's outlined in blue on the screen here, and it's just over 12 acres in area. The applicant and owner request to rezone the property from KRR, which is Kettlestone Retail Regional, to KMF stacked high for a multifamily residential project. Notices were mailed to adjoining property owners within 250 feet on August 1st. No formal correspondence has been received regarding this request. The concept plan, just kind of zoom in here a little bit. The concept plan identifies the construction of a three-story apartment building with a total of 210 multifamily units. You can see there's several amenities scattered throughout the site. There's a dog park, sport court, clubhouse, swimming pool, and other amenities throughout the site. Landscape buffers will be required on all sides of the property because it's being downzoned, or it's proposed to be downzoned from the commercial development. So the burden of the landscape buffer would be on this particular project. Several underground parking spaces are also proposed with this three-story building as well as surface parking. The proposed density of the project, the KMF stacked high zoning designation would allow up to 24 units per acre. The proposed density for this particular project, the 210 units, is just, is right around 17 and a half units per acre. So we're not quite up to that. The minimum density for the KMF stacked high district is 15 units per acre. Kettlestone Master Plan identifies this particular property for mixed use, which can include a mix of commercial development or multifamily development. Our normal KMU district actually allows for standalone multifamily projects. But when integrated into a larger commercial area such as this, if you'll recall, the KRR zoning designation was applied to this roughly 140-acre development last fall, the Kettlestone Lakes development. You've probably driven by and seen lots of dirt moving and streets being poured and things like that out there over the last several months. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on August 12th, the commission heard from several area residents regarding concerns about traffic flow and concerns about increased traffic due to this particular project. I can tell you that an overall traffic study for the Kettlestone area was completed prior to the construction of Grand Prairie Parkway. That's why the city made the decision to build six lanes in certain parts of this roadway corridor, four lanes in other parts of the roadway corridor. In addition, there was an update that was done to the overall traffic study back in 2020, I believe, when the Keytown Loop development was being discussed with the city, and that made some recommendations that actually have been implemented, particularly along the Ashworth and Grand Prairie intersection, as well as some additional traffic signals in the area. I can tell you that the current capital improvements plan that gets adopted each March, that also has widening of Ashworth Road east of Grand Prairie Parkway. So the remaining section of Ashworth Road widening would be planned for fiscal year 2028, as well as completing the widening of Ashworth Road from essentially Parkview Crossing Drive all the way over to LA Grant Parkway in fiscal year 2029. So there are certainly plans in the future for what, for future widening of Ashworth Road. Obviously, this is kind of the first project, or I shouldn't say the first project in Kettlestone Lakes, because there's a commercial development being built down there at the corner. But this is, you know, one of the first projects within this area that, you know, by that point in time, when this, as this continues to develop out, certainly there would be a need for additional lanes and things like that on Ashworth Road. So we are planning for those, those improvements into the future. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this request at their meeting on August 12th. Staff recommends holding the public hearing. I'm happy to take any questions. And I do believe Roger Fink with Trident Development, I do believe he is on the Zoom call, and then Bill Spencer and Aaron Olindeich with Kettlestone Lakes LLC are also here tonight as well.
Would anyone like to, we're not ready for you yet. Would anyone from the applicant like to speak or share? Does anyone here tonight?
I think you raised his hand.
Somebody raised their hand? Is it the developer?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Roger, would you like to speak?
Yes, I think I might have been muted. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm not too familiar with Zoom, but I hope you'll bear with me here for a little bit. Mayor and council, my name is Roger Fink. I'm principal and senior vice president of Trident Development. Been in business for almost 20 years. As a full-service real estate company, development company, and specializing in multifamily market rate development and senior housing communities. We have concentrated our activities in Minnesota and Montana, developing over 4,000 dwelling units over those past 20 years. Our current plan is for a single building containing 210 dwelling units, excuse me. They're configured in a three-story building with underground parking and a mix of studio units, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom floor plans. Andy, I think pretty well touched on the number of amenities this property might have, and I appreciate that. We fully intend to observe the Kettlestone multifamily performance standards in our design and material selection. And for timing on this, maybe Bill can speak to that a little bit more, or Aaron, but we kind of see this as a spring of '26 construction start, completing the project probably in the summer of 2027. And we would be hiring a third-party professional property management company for operations and leasing of this property. That's the main thing I wanted to offer here this evening. I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you. And anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions for this particular public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or raise your hand. If you're participating via Zoom, click on the raise hand icon under the reactions.
Again, I'm Veronica Lass, the Soil and Water Conservation Commissioner. And when you see farmland being developed as in this project, you want to know the drainage issues and the soil types. If you have a karsted limestone, you can see on there how the former drainage was from the land next to the development area. I don't see the plan for really combining the farmland drainage to the city. And do we have check valves on all these sanitary sewer and storm sewer lines? Because we could end up really in complication. And one other question as far as our soil types, the karst limestone opens up sinkholes, especially when we have water table dropping. You know, we have so much water used by the data centers that our water table is dropping. So all over those areas that are karst limestone areas could open up sinkholes, even just like it did when the Avenue of the Saints was built. It will never be an interstate because they can't raise the rate, because we lose two lanes of traffic up there in northeast Iowa. The sinkhole.
Thank you.
So I'll provide a similar response to what I provided on the previous public hearing. So this particular property is actually within the Kettlestone Lakes preliminary plat for Plats 2 and 3, I believe. And similarly to the previous request, the soil conditions and any locations of tile lines are considered at the time the stormwater management plan is reviewed and approved by city staff and our consulting engineers. So when they do any sort of construction on this site, any tiles encountered would be rerouted to the public storm sewer to make sure that we're not creating any sort of downstream impact.
Would anyone else like to address the council and voice comments or questions?
Good evening. How are you?
Hi, Anna. Hi, Chris. I'm Ramona Camander. I live at 3250 Ashworth Road, right next to the new development. Okay? And I got a few questions. Hopefully you can answer. Andy did a great job last week, but he wasn't complete, I didn't think. I want to piggyback off her question. The plat for the stormwater ponds and sewers, when was that developed? Was that developed for the commercial part, or was this developed for the rezoning for this?
I'll let you answer or ask another question.
All right. Okay, good. Okay. Traffic studies. There's going to be two new roads that are coming off this property. Okay? From what I understand from Andy, the traffic study was done for the commercial site off of Grand Prairie, not off of Ashworth. Okay? If it was, I'd really like to see that traffic study. It took me 15 minutes to get here tonight. I could hardly get out of my driveway now. And we're not going to widen Ashworth until 2029? Why not? We're going to widen the east side, but we're not going to widen the west side? What's wrong with that? Oh, you guys don't answer questions?
Well, Andy has said he's going to answer all of them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we will address them all.
Okay. Economic development versus existing taxpayer burdens. Been here over 20 years. I'm sure I'm just a baby here compared to some of these residents. But ever since Kettlestone's been coming in, my property taxes have gone up. They haven't gone down. So wins, my tax is going to go down, Andy. The TIF that these guys are using, okay? When they pay that, when they start paying that, where's that money going to go? Is it going to go to infrastructure or the taxpayer's going to get a rebate for helping with all the infrastructure and the development going on? Hopefully you can answer this question. Public safety, you know, is the council, Andy did mention that there was going to be traffic and whatever, turnarounds or, you know, for that. But liability, okay? If, if there's nowhere for these cars to go, I mean, no direct, you know, once they come out of this development, right, or east or west, liability, somebody's going to get hurt. I'm telling you, the number of cars that are there now, because you got the soccer fields going, and you got the entertainment going across the street, you know, and yada, yada, yada. So, oh, in my driveway. Do you see where it is? Do you see where Florence is compared to my driveway? How are we going to keep citizens off my driveway when it's that close to that road? Okay? The privacy that we have with all those trees there, I'd like to keep that privacy. Not with other trees, not with baby trees. Okay? A fence, maybe a privacy fence. Keep them out of the driveway, maybe a automatic gate to keep them out of the driveway. Okay? Andy mentioned something last week about us using their road and then going on our Andy mentioned something last week about us using their road and then going on on our driveway. Okay. And I thought, you know, that might work, but no, it won't. Because then you got people coming from that road onto our driveway. Okay. So we need some kind of blockage from the public coming on our private driveway. And I think that's about it for right now. We'll see what Andy says and if I come back up.
Okay, try to take them in order. I think a few of us were taking notes.
I'll try to answer Ms. Callender's questions as best as I can. So the first question related to plat and infrastructure and stormwater management. So this particular development, so the council has approved preliminary Platts for essentially three phases of the Kettlestone Lakes neighborhood, which essentially includes all the area colored in this pinkish color on the west side of this property. So the developers in the process of constructing, there's two large stormwater management ponds, regional ponds that would be constructed south of future extension of southeast Kettlestone Boulevard. So the stormwater management for, and then there would be a third pond further to the south that will be constructed in the few, as, as additional phases of this development occur. So there's a little bit of road improvement work that has been approved, which would include the extension of Kettlestone Boulevard, an extension of Parkview Crossing Drive to the north up to Ashworth Road, and a short extension of it south of, south of a roundabout. And then in addition, most recently at the last council meeting, the council approved the construction plans for Platts two and three to finish this extension of southeast Kettlestone Boulevard, as well as the construction of southeast Florence Drive up to Ashworth Road. So as part of all those construction plans, you know, stormwater management facilities will be constructed, public sewer, public water main, as well as, of course, the, the road infrastructure will be constructed during that time. Why no traffic study? So the traffic study that was completed for the overall Grand Prairie Parkway corridor did not just include those commercial areas off of Grand Prairie Parkway. That traffic study included the entire 1,500 acre development, which if, if you recall, that development stretches from University Avenue runs south all the way to the interstate and then runs essentially east to southeast Waco Place or 98th Street, and then runs west of Grand Prairie Parkway all the way over to southeast Elegrand Parkway. So that traffic study accounted for that entire 1,500 acre development, not just the properties along the Grand Prairie Parkway corridor. So that is why we did not require a traffic study for this particular rezoning request, because there's already been one done. And then why not widen Ashworth Road west of Grand Prairie Parkway prior to widening east of Grand Prairie Parkway? I would say that obviously the city has to prioritize our capital improvements and also prioritize based on project costs, what other projects that are going on. Obviously, we all do our CIP planning beginning every fall, CIP gets approved in March of each, of each year. And simply based on prioritizing those extensions of, of public roads. We did a short extension of Ashworth Road widening in conjunction with the city of West Des Moines not too long ago. So simply completing the eastern section of Ashworth Road east of Grand Prairie Parkway makes more sense as you do your phases of widening of that roadway corridor.
Brad, would you like to speak to a question that there was about?
Yeah, you bet.
As it pertains to tax increment financing, a good part of the Kettlestone area is incorporated into our urban real area, which then does allow for tax increment financing to be collected. Quite frankly, the majority of that tax increment financing that is collected goes towards the construction of infrastructure. So obviously, the city many years ago now took on a a large public improvement project with the construction of the interchange off of I-80 and Grand Prairie Parkway, as well as the infrastructure all the way up to University Avenue. Quite frankly, TIF collected from this, while it's much, it's part of a much larger kind of universal collection throughout the community, would go towards paving Ashworth Road. So while it's not specifically earmarked, that's how we fund our projects, is utilizing it towards these projects are collected, collecting it, and then it's being utilized towards those public improvements. There is a development agreement that's currently under review relative to a portion of the infrastructure, again, public infrastructure within this development, where the developer is putting in that infrastructure and is receiving back a portion of it. But again, it hasn't been finalized. It's still being worked on. Anything remaining would go towards all of our other public improvement projects throughout the city.
There is also a question regarding public safety. I would just highlight that we actually have a 10-year public safety staffing plan that is in place in order to add resources as, as we are proactively planning for them throughout the city as we have additional developments and additional residents that are expected to, to come into the community. And then in terms of a privacy or some, some way to keep people off your driveway, that's not relevant to a zoning request. And so it doesn't derail a zoning request. However, that is something we would want to stay in very strong communication with you and planning around that as this development goes forward and making sure that we understand exactly how that's going to be managed going forward.
I'm, I'm happy to have a conversation with, with Mona about the driveway in the coming days.
Can I take taxes?
No, I wanted to. Okay, you go.
Yeah, we've lowered taxes, the taxable levy rate every year that I've been on city council, which is coming up on nine years with the except of 20, exception of 2020. And in 2021, we, we double lowered it, which you're seeing is the general increase in property values and the city's portion. When you factor in the lowering of the tax levy means that it is more or less staying the same. So well, you, you may pay more in taxes, although I think most people in 2025 are paying less than they were in 2024. If you pull your tax bill, may not be for years. I don't know. I haven't looked. But your frustration may be better aimed at other taxable entities or taxing entities that are not doing the same thing that we are on a yearly basis.
We do understand that there is an impact across the entire city that's been felt and really across the entire country in terms of increased property values. That is not unique to just the development next to Grand Prairie Parkway. I think property values faced something on average of 17% in Waukees a couple of years ago, and so we do try to do our best to lower the levy down.
Um, you talked about the safety. What resources were you talking about?
Well, we were talking about our staffing plan to add, to add officers to our.
Oh, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about traffic safety is what I'm talking about.
Well, so there are multiple components to traffic safety. And so what I would, what I would comment is there is not just design, right, in terms of designing for safety, but then there's also enforcement. And that's where the public safety component is. I want to, to ask if you have any additional questions and then encourage you to stick around and we can have a very direct conversation after the meeting too about this. Then you know some of those questions that you have.
Okay. Taken too much time, aren't I?
No such thing.
Yeah, I'll find her afterwards. I think there's a few things to follow up on. Can we get her, get Mona a copy of that traffic study also?
Is anyone else, anyone else? That's what we're planning to widen in 2028 and 2029. That'll be all the way through to Warrior Lane. You either come to the podium or you, or you stop because we can't record it if you're sitting. It's okay. I just, not everybody can hear you. But anyone else, please approach the podium?
Hello, my name is Sarah Files. I live in Glen Village. I have I have concerns, like most, mostly. Why? Like all of those trees have to be ripped out for that road? And she's the first one to suffer when all those trees get ripped out? So they clear this land for this project? I, I don't understand why, if this is the plan that you are being presented with for this plat of land, why does it have to come at such a high cost for the direct surrounding area? And that's, that's my question. Thank you.
I wouldn't just start off the conversation and then I'll have Andy add to it that we have a comprehensive plan in Waukees, which defines what land use will be used, what, what land will be used for across the entire city. And that the current one was put in place in 2017, and it was put in place through multiple public hearings, multiple public sessions. And at that time, all the area along this was identified as particular uses, which includes retail, commercial, multifamily, mixed use, a whole host of those kinds of uses, which have been identified along Grand Prairie Parkway as it was identified this area would be the Kettlestone development going forward. So it's been known for quite some time that these areas and this land was meant for that, for that. Additionally, the vast majority of this land is agricultural based or had been previously and had been dedicated to this. I would also just comment that the city does not own the lands and the neighbors do not own the lands. And the people that own the lands do have choices in terms of how they, they use their own land. Andy, what would you add?
I, I would, I would just add that, you know, regardless if this was going to stay, this was going to be rezoned for multifamily as it's proposed, or if it was going to stay with the commercial zoning that it currently has, there's going to be some impact to trees on that property regardless of what development happens there. It's not just this multifamily project that, that is going to impact the trees on the property. We obviously encourage preservation of any sort of mature tree. You know, as possible, like I, I would love it if they could preserve all the trees on the property. However, the owner of the property has certain rights and entitlements to do what they can within, of course, our code of ordinances with, with the property. And you know, they need to clear trees in order to develop it. I don't really know what else you're.
No, I would also just add that we have throughout the last several years, put more focus on working with developers around trying to maintain where possible. We do recognize, we don't have a lot of trees in Waukees to begin with, and so we want to maintain as much as we can. It's just not always.
I appreciate you making that comment that we don't own the land. And that's the question I get a lot is why are you doing this? We don't own the land.
My trees on my property, I don't want touched.
No, they won't be. Nothing on your land will be touched.
Fantastic. Wanted that on record.
All right. With that, I now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G3 is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend chapter 169 zoning ordinance, city of Waukees, Iowa, by rezoning certain, certain, can't talk anymore, certain property from A1 to R4, a parcel to be known as Schuman Townhomes. And now to clear this public hearing open, I gave you received any requests?
No, none received in the city clerk's office.
Thank you.
Good evening. The owner and applicant is Stambro Residential LLC. The property is located north of Northwest Douglas Parkway and west of Northwest 10th Street, contains 3.75 acres. It's the area outlined in blue on the screen. The request is to rezone the property from A1 Agricultural District to R4 for town home residential development. The property currently includes a single-family home and several accessory structures. All structures are planned to be removed in the future for development of townhomes. The notifications have been sent out and the rezoning sign has been posted. Staff has not received any correspondence for or against the request. Go to the concept plan that they've provided here. So this is the concept plan that was provided. It shows a total of 30 townhome units. And then a shared drive is proposed to serve the proposed townhome development and then also future adjacent development to the south. The streets proposed internal to the townhome development will be privately owned and maintained. Parkland dedication requirements will apply based on the proposed number of residential units proposed. The required amount of parkland is 0.44 acres. The applicant intends to provide a fee in lieu of land dedication for this one. Nearby parks include both Triumph Park, which is pretty close to the southwest of this, and then Stratford Crossing Park. Sorry, southeast of this was Triumph Park and then Stratford Crossing Park is to the west. Although the current comprehensive plan classifies this property as single-family residential, staff is comfortable with the proposal as the proposed rezoning is compatible with the zoning of surrounding properties, and it will also provide a variety of housing options for the area. And then they also did provide, sorry, they did provide some conceptual building elevations for the townhome units, and those are up on the screen. Planning and zoning commission did approve the, or sorry, they recommended approval of the rezoning at their meeting on August 12th. Staff recommends holding the public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant or the representative on this project wish to address the council? All right. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions for this particular public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or raise your hand. If you're participating via Zoom, click on the raise hand icon located under the reactions controls.
Right now, we're having issue. I'm Veronica Black, Soil and Water Conservation Commissioner. In Dallas County, we, we have a, quite a serious problem with open bottom sump pits releasing more and higher levels of radon and methane gas. We've got methane 20, 20-some leaks and, and blowouts in different pipelines from North Dakota, South Dakota. And now my son's old company poet is proposing a methane gas line with approval all the way through two car limestone counties that they can't even have Avenue of the Saints.
You're conflating a couple of different things.
But I know, I'm just asking a question. Do these homes have radon remediation systems set up for them? And are they using open bottom sump pits or solid bottom ones?
I just want everyone to know that these townhome units have not been issued building permits yet. We're simply talking about proposed zoning. But building code does not require radon remediation systems. There have been a couple bills, I believe, in the past couple legislative sessions where radon remediation was considered to be required. However, that legislation did not move forward. Open bottom or solid bottom sump pits are permitted by the building code. Neither, there is neither a preference for either one of them as long as they're installed co-compliant, whether it's an open bottom or a solid bottom sump pit.
All right. Would any other comments, any other comments or questions? All right. Council have any questions at this time? And now to clear this public hearing closed. I would just comment before we go on to the action items that I do appreciate everyone that comes out to share their thoughts and questions. It really does matter and it does inform continued future policy that we have in the city. So I do appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us around how we develop. If you would like to stay afterwards, if you have any additional questions we did not answer, please feel free to do. With that, agenda item H1, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend chapter 169 zoning ordinance, city of Waukees, Iowa, by rezoning certain property from KRC to KMU slash PD1, a parcel known as Kettlestone Central South, Platte 2 Lot 5. a parcel known as Kettlestone Central South Platte two lot five. This is an introduction and a first reading.
I introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading and title only.
Okay.
I don't think I really have anything to add other than staff recommends approval of the first consideration. I'm happy to take any questions that the council might have.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Then the item H two consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend chapter one sixty nine zoning ordinance city of Waukees, Iowa by rezoning certain property from KRR to KMS back type a parcel to be known as Kettlestone Lakes Apartments. This is also an introduction and a first reading.
Introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading and title.
Nothing further to add other than staff recommends approval of the first consideration. Happy to take any questions from the council. I don't have anything further to add, but staff recommends approval of the first consideration. I'm happy to take any questions from the council. My neck's really bothering me too, so I'm trying to stand up straight.
I want to reiterate that this is a zoning question. This is not at the building permits or the mental or additional stage yet. And so there will be additional discussion at those stages. Are there any questions?
I just heard a brief comment. I promise I will be brief. And no, and I just I want to echo the mayor's comments, but also note there is a process for these things for a reason. And as we've seen, there is a there's a reason that we do have it, right? A lot of times it may seem as though the process is here just because we're required to have a process. Yes, that is true, but also we have a process for reasons like this so that neighbors can come together as neighbors, discuss problems and come together for a solution. I think there's I think there are solutions here. And I will also echo that there, I mean, as neighbors, we've all, I mean, many of us have been here for a long time, right? Our neighbors are allowed to do what they would like to with their property. However, we are fortunate that we have this process that is not a fast process by any means. It is a lengthy process. It is a thorough process in order to be rezoned and platted and then eventually get to the actual construction and building phase. So while I know we have the developer in the room, we have concerned neighbors in the room, we have the city in the room. This is this is the opportunity. This is the perfect time for us to get all of the problems out there. Make sure that there is follow up between all the parties involved and make sure that there are solutions before we get to the end of the process. Again, it is not a quick process, but I think that we're fortunate that everyone is involved at this stage so that there can be solutions by the time we get to an actual construction of a building, right? And thank you for being here.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Agenda item H three consideration of approval of an ordinance from in chapter one sixty nine zoning ordinance city of Waukees, Iowa by rezoning certain property from A one to R four. A parcel to be known as Schuman Townhomes. This is an introduction and first reading.
Introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading and title only.
Second.
I have nothing further to add. Staff recommends approval of the first consideration of the rezoning and I think. Are there any further questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Agenda item I one is consent agenda part one. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I two consent agenda part two. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussions?
I will be abstaining due to a professional conflict.
Please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Abstain.
Item I three consideration of approval of a resolution approving site plan for US Bank at three hundred South Alice Southeast Alice's Road. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
The owner is WTC US LLC and the applicant is U F Crane. The property is located west of Southeast Alice's Road and north of Southeast Laurel Street is highlighted or outlined in red on the screen. It is just over an acrean area. The property is zoned D dash one convenient highway service virtual district with a planned development overlay. Project includes the construction of a single story building for US Bank. That's the plan here. The building is proposed to be four thousand five hundred square feet in area and twenty five feet in height. Bill included drive up canopy and ATM, a trash enclosure proposed at the southwest corner of the site. Two accesses will be provided into the site off of the private drive along the north side of the site. There also be shared access with the lots to the south, providing access point off the Southeast Laurel Street. Parking and landscaping requirements are being met. A ten foot wide trail exists already along Southeast Alice's Road at the east side of the site. A five foot wide sidewalk will be installed along the west side of the site. And then pedestrian access will be provided from both sides of the site from both the trail and the sidewalk. Public utilities are provided. Stormwater detention will be provided with an underground detention facility, which is located in the northwest corner of the site. Building elevations. The buildings are supposed to look like that. The elevations are constructed mostly of brick, stone, metal panels and storefront system. And then the trash enclosure will also be constructed of bricks to match the building. Staff recommends approval of the site plan. If you have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I four for Kettlestone Central Townhomes Platte two I four A consideration of approval of a resolution approving preliminary Platte. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
And I'll go ahead and present on items four A via C at the same time. The owner and applicant is Rock Equity Buildings LLC. The property is located south of Southeast Laurel Parkway and west of Southeast Laurel Plate. It contains twelve point seven four acres. Property is zoned K dash MF dash medium. It's Kettlestone Multifamily Stack Media District. The project includes the second phase of development, also central townhomes. Phase two includes a total of nine townhome buildings with a total of fifty townhome units. Each unit is on its own lot. Zoom in here so you can see a little bit better. The buildings range between four to sixteen per building. The units each have three bedrooms and are between thirteen fifty and fifteen hundred square feet in area. The site plan also includes a fenced-in pickleball court and a fenced-in dog park as well as a fire pit area with seating. These amenities are shown within the southeast corner of the site. Site plan also shows six townhome buildings for future development for a total of forty four units. And that's kind of the area grayed out on the screen. The future phase will require separate site. Final plot identifies the fifty townhome lots, Outlet X for all the common areas, Outlet Z for stormwater detention, Outlet Y for future townhome development, Outlet E for City Park, which is where on the east side of the development with the big pond. All out, sorry, all outlets with the exception of the park outlet will be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. Park outlet will be owned and maintained by the city of Waukees. Two accesses are provided into the overall townhome development off of Southeast West Town Parkway. All streets interior to the site will be privately owned and maintained by the HOA. Ten foot wide public trail will be installed along the south side of the site and surrounding the city owned pond along the side of the development. There are several private sidewalks that will be provided throughout the development. Parking and landscaping requirements are being met. The units will be serviced with private utilities. And then stormwater detention will be provided with existing ponds, ones located at the southwest corner of the site, shown in blue on the screen. And then also with the big pond that they're proposing on the side of the site within the city park. Parkland dedication requirements will be met with a dedication of one point zero six acres of land. This will also include several trails which will eventually connect to other area trails. Goes to the building elevations, very similar to phase one. The buildings will look like that. Again, very similar. The materials are fiber cement siding and panel. And then all buildings are two story and each unit includes a two car attached garage. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plot. Final plot.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I four B consideration of approval of a resolution approving final Platte. I get a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have nothing further to add. If you have to answer any questions.
Please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I four C consideration of approval of a resolution approving site plan. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have nothing further to add. If you have to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I five consideration of approval of a resolution approving agreement for professional consulting services with SVTA Architects, the four ten sixth street project. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My my neck is fine, so I'll. Before you is consideration of a consulting contract with SVTA Architects for the four ten six street building. Previously until about nineteen ninety nine, that building served as city hall and as library. And now we're considering some different design aspect architectural services. This was a strategic plan priority that the city council and mayor considered for this most recent year. And the the contract would cover design development, construction documents, bidding and construction administration over a price of approximately one hundred ten thousand dollars or eleven percent of the total project cost. Of the original space as it is right now is just over eighteen hundred square feet. It's proposed that the new footprint would be approximately twenty five hundred square feet, which would include about seven hundred square feet or a new incubator space. The timeline if approved tonight would be designed for the fall of this year, twenty twenty five, with bidding to take place during the winter twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Construction would start in spring of twenty twenty six with an anticipated completion in early twenty twenty seven. Happy to take any questions. Staff would recommend.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item J is reported.
Thank you, Mayor. I did send out a copy of an email this morning to the mayor and council, but also thought I'd mention it here tonight. We did receive notice here today that the city of Waukees has been will be receiving two million dollars in grant funding through the Iowa Transportation Commission for their Transportation Alternative Set aside program specifically towards the proposed underpass underneath Hickman Road. So that's our regional trail improvement project, two million dollars in in funding that will come from the state. That's all I have.
No report.
No report.
Ben?
No report. Thanks, everybody.
At that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.